National allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lozey.
Here.
Councilmember Mobley.
Here.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Trent.
Here. Our first item is introduction of new street maintenance worker two.
Good evening, Mayor and honorable councilmembers and all. Everyone else, how are you doing? Just a quick introduction today. We just hired on Trevor Yates. He's a born and raised Fortuna guy. He went to Fortuna High and he likes hobbies, is tinkering on cars and likes working on cars, on his friends' cars and stuff like that. It seems like I see a different vehicle in the shop every day. So I'm like, whose car is that? Oh, it's Trevor's. So yeah, I just want to introduce you to our newest member. So Trevor calling up.
I just want to say thank you. I appreciate the opportunity and I'm loving it so far. It's amazing. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is oral comments from the public. Anybody who would like to make a -- oh, wait a minute. Did I miss something? No. Okay. Anybody who would like to make a comment on anything that's not on the agenda? Now is your time and you have three minutes. Okay, see none will close public comment and we'll go to the consent calendar.
Mayor Trent? I just wanted to make a comment. We did receive a public comment from a citizen who provided --
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Provided a letter and it's been distributed to the council and will be part of the meeting record.
Okay. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. Okay, consent calendar. We have all the city departments' reports and let's consideration of a fee waiver for -- and I cannot say this.
Arapayo Ranchero.
Okay, that's it. Event at Rona Park grounds and 2024 water supply and demand assessment. Anybody want to pull any of them?
I'd like to pull item D.
Okay, D. And I would like to pull items C and D. Anybody else? Okay, go ahead on D.
I had a question about the transfer ratio because we've not met it the last -- it looks like we're not set to meet it now. I don't -- even with our increase, will we be able to meet it? And if not, how do we prevent going underneath that threshold?
Yeah, that's a good question. So as you stated, we have not met it the last two years. With the increase, that'll be starting in July, so that doesn't affect the numbers that were included in the staff report. It does not look like we'll meet it this current year. We do expect the COVID exemption to happen this year, so we do, you know, expect to be okay for this year. But if for some -- by some chance that does not get approved, once again, the waiver due to COVID declining ridership in which they waive the 10% fare box recovery ratio, it would require the city's general fund to make up that difference. And so that would be about $5,000 to $6,000 potentially. The city is looking at other avenues for next year in addition to the rate increase that was approved at the last council meeting, and that includes, you know, potential ad revenue on the buses and some other potential areas to bring in some revenue. So we are trying to meet that 10% for next year.
Thank you. And actually, that's what -- one of the ones I called for. I did ask that that be put on there so we could keep an eye on that. So thank you. I wanted to tell you, I appreciate that. And I'm actually on the transit authority board. So we are talking to Greg and I've got some ideas on how we can increase our fare box, too. So we'll be having a meeting to try to get that. But I just kind of wanted to keep an eye on that. And then with C, I just wanted to say, and I've been meaning to say this, but I haven't, I really like the part that you added in there about the planning commission, you know, seeing that, you know, what their projects were. So I do like reading that one each month. So I wanted to thank you for putting that in there. And that's it. So do we have a motion on that one?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Our next item. Business is public hearing to consider the adoption of the rates and fees for city services. Resolution 2024-17. Staff report, please.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So I did want to just clarify one thing before I get into the staff report, and that is that this does not include our water and wastewater monthly user rates and fees. And so that was a question that we received. Those are going to be coming on July 1st. So the water and wastewater lab fees is something completely different than our monthly water and wastewater charges that are going to be brought forward July 1st as part of the Prop 218 process and the mailer that was sent out to the public. So I just wanted to make that clear. As far as tonight's item to approve the rates and fees for the building department, community development department and the laboratory fees, staff did present the proposed fees that were included in this staff report to the council at a special workshop on May 2nd. Several action items came from those discussions. We've incorporated those changes into the attachment. And so just to summarize what was included, under the building fee schedule, there was an increase to all billing fees of 4.8%. Under the community development fee schedule, there were a number of changes to our actual fees charged, just the deposit amount. So the deposits were increased to get it closer to the actual costs that we've seen historically. And then there are no changes under the water and wastewater laboratory fees. So the various fees and rates for services for those three departments have been included in the city's budget. And if there's any questions, staff is happy to answer those.
Any questions from council? No? Okay, we'll open public comment. Does anybody in the public have a comment on this item? See none will close public comment.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2024-17 and read by title only.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Roll call, please.
Resolution 2024-17, resolution of the City of Fortuna establishing a schedule of fees and charges for building, community development, and water and wastewater within the City of Fortuna for fiscal year 2024-25. Councilmember Lozey?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes. Motion passes. Our next item of business is a supplemental budget request for the authorization for an over hire of one police officer. We have a staff report for that.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor Trent and Honorable City Council. You have the staff report in front of you, so I'm not going to go line by line unless requested. In summary, tonight's SPR request for an over hire is about mitigating critical staffing levels as we head into one of the busiest times of the year. Unfortunately, the police department is facing some unique staffing challenges due to the anticipated loss of one or more officers. This is to positions available with outside agencies as well as the anticipated loss of one or more officers to recovery and/or rehabilitation timelines involved with pre-scheduled medical procedures. At the PD, we want to ensure the continuity of operations and avoid excessive overtime accruals by working ahead of these potential issues and potential losses in order to absorb and minimize the impact. Additionally, there is a possibility that exists currently in which the department may be able to capitalize in hiring a seasoned area lateral. Therefore, staff is recommending that council approve the SPR and authorize the chief of police to fill one over hire position. Taking more of a long-range view of fiscal impacts, a year's worth of wages and benefits associated with the over hire could cost the city as much as $175,000. In my professional estimate, I feel like we are looking more at a 90-day to six-month timeline. And so the maximum impact for six months would be around $50,000. So at this time, I'll turn things back over to the council and I'm willing to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from council? No? Okay, we'll open public comment. Anybody from the public like to comment on this item? See none will close public comment.
I would just like to make one comment. Thank you for the thorough information because it does help make the decision without having to belabor it here. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve a supplemental budget request authorizing the chief of police to over hire one additional police officer.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Our next item of business is approve the agreement for interim city manager services. Staff report?
Item E.
We have C.
Well, I was getting this out of here early. Oh, okay. Supplemental budget request for professional service contract amendment with GHD for design and environmental services for Mill Creek Habitat Connectivity Project CP -- or CIP 9123. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I, too, will be brief as this is an item that we have chatted about before. This is a supplemental budget request and an authorization for a professional services contract amendment with GHD for the city's Mill Creek Habitat Connectivity Project. This project is one that the city has worked on for some time, trying to expand upon some of the momentum the city gained with the Rona Creek project, with the Strong Creek Fish Passage and the Jamison Creek Fish Passage Improvement Project. And that is completing drainage improvement projects along the city's creeks at key roadways where we can leverage restoration funding and the need and desire to perform restoration activities in those areas, fish passage being one of the key ones. Also, while -- I shouldn't say maintaining, but upgrading critical infrastructure that needs improvements for flood control and other considerations as it is. So we did receive a grant from the Wildlife Conservation Board last year in 2023 to complete the design and permitting packages for four crossings of Mill Creek in Fortuna. Those are located at Weber Street at Rona Ville Road at Mill Those are located at Weber Street, at Roanokeville Road, at Mill Street, and at Mountain View Road. We entered into a professional services agreement with GHD. We entered into the grant agreement with WCB. And beginning in late 2023, early 2024, we began field work in that area, performing surveys, things of that nature that feed into the design. While getting out there and walking the extents of the creek, we did identify a previously unknown fifth crossing that is located right in the middle of Roanokeville Road and Mill Street. It's on private property. It's a private crossing. And it is at least a partial, if not a full, fish passage barrier. So the design team, we, we sat back and talked about it a little bit. You know, at that time, it's not within the scope of the city's project as we had defined it and were performing it. But we really felt like finding the funding and adding that into our design suite and our permitting suite for the project would be important because, you know, a lot of these projects are very expensive. They'll have big project footprints when we do them. And, and because of that, we're not going to be able to shoulder that burden with city drainage funds alone. We really need to be thinking about outside funding opportunities, not too dissimilar to what we received with the WCB in order to complete this project in the first place. So we talked to the property owner. You know, they're very interested in seeing some improvement there. But, you know, they don't necessarily have the means to advance something like that themselves either. And we saw an opportunity in speaking with staff at the WCB to request a funding augmentation so that we could fold an extra crossing design and permitting package into the city's design project. I will note that, you know, this does not tie the city to completing or funding or otherwise, you know, performing the improvement for the property owner. It'll just be to develop, you know, a, a crossing and a permit package that would complement and add to the corridor connectivity. You know, vice versa, this doesn't require the property owner move forward with the specific design as proposed in this particular case. So it'll really just be part of the suite of engineering and permitting things that we develop that'll better leverage funding applications in the future as we can really show, as we apply for these programs, look, we're targeting full connectivity in this area, and we found all the problems, and we want to approach a means to fix them all and, and look for that grant opportunity. So, so with that, we did make a funding request to the WCB for an additional $107,000, which would be added into our existing grant agreement. And they did approve that. And we have received the final paperwork, which has been signed and executed. The action we are requesting here this evening is an authorization of a supplemental budget request, which would, you know, add the budget for this additional work into actually next fiscal year's budget as this all came about and was approved after we developed and approved the CIP at the June 7th meeting. And then it would also authorize an amendment to the professional services contract, which unlike many other ones where we award through our on-call contract, this one, due to the nature of the grant, had a standalone grant agreement and contract with a not to exceed value of $966,000. That was the original amount of the contract. So this would add that additional 107 there. So with that, staff could add that to the budget and perform the contract amendment with GHD. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and thanks for your time.
Questions from council?
Just a comment that this is, besides the habitat connectivity portion, this also, not this particular crossing, but others. It's protecting our infrastructure. Because if you remember what happened on Roanokeville Road and Jamison Creek, that was a catastrophic failure. And this is getting out ahead of that and protecting our infrastructure. Thank you for being on the forefront of that.
Thank you. Just by chance, a couple of months ago, I ran into one of the owners of the privately owned culvert out there. And they were really excited that the city was stepping up and, and doing this fish habitat restoration and all the work that was going to go into that. So they're, like you say, very willing and that the city is going to, they'll give access to whatever we need. So thank you for going through with this and doing all the work on it.
Okay, we'll open public comment. Anybody from the public make, anybody like to make a, can't even speak. Anybody from the public like to make a comment on this item? C and then we'll close public comment. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a professional services contract amendment with GHD for engineering and environmental services for the Mill Creek Habitat Connectivity Project, CIP 9123, and authorize a supplemental budget request in the amount of $107,000. For the boys vote.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to city manager's report.
I think we have one more item.
Item D.
I'm really trying to get out of here, I guess. Oh, that's the one I tried to skip to already. Approval of an agreement for interim city manager service. Don't want to skip that one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Trent. So this is just a brief staff report. As the council knows, I provided my resignation to the city with my last date being July 14th of this year. So there's a little bit less than a month left that I'll be here. We were very fortunate to have the opportunity to bring on an experienced administrator, Amy Nielsen, the former county administrative officer, who has been away from that a little bit of time, but she has a great amount of experience in public administration. We had a chance to interview with her, talk about the position, and she is anxious to take that on and would like to do that to help the city out at this time. I think it's really important for the council to be able to bring somebody on so that another department head wouldn't have to take on the administrative burden of the city manager duties. And so I think Amy's a great choice for that. We had a special study session this morning, and the council had an opportunity to talk to Amy and interview her and discuss this interim appointment. The draft contract is attached to the council agenda packet that can be found online. And so that is there. The council's had an opportunity to review that. But the term is for four months. The compensation is specified in there. And this is really just intended to be a temporary position, again, up to four months until the council can go through recruitment to find a permanent replacement. So I will say that it's been an honor to be able to work here. And so I have mixed feelings of giving away, you know, really handing off the reins to, to somebody for a job that's really been an incredible job for me. So definitely mixed emotions going on. But I'm really pleased that Amy is willing to come on and, and take this on as a responsibility. And I think she'll be great. She's very thoughtful. She's, she's really a good, a good thinker, and I think she'll be very patient. And so I think she'll be a good alternative moving forward in the interim and to be able to work with our department heads, to be able to keep everything going without anybody having to take on those extra duties. So with that, I'll hand it back to the council if you have any questions.
Any questions from council?
I think she's a very capable person for our interim, and we'd be glad to have you, but in second, you know, be glad to have Amy.
Yeah, and I'll just say, the plan would be for her to start next week. She'd be here the first three days, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. So we'd have next week that we would have an overlap, and then also the week of the 8th, we would both overlap. So I'm putting together a transition plan to be able to hand off a lot of those things either to department heads or to Amy. And so we're very anxious to be able to have a little bit of time to be able to have that overlap. And so we're, again, have a transition plan to be able to kind of assign her some of those, those duties.
Just to comment with Amy as the interim and then whomever we hire as the permanent, you're going to be a tough act to follow. Some of the things that you've done here, started the projects that you've got moving have just been amazing. I can't say enough. And we are all going to miss you. And I know department heads and, and city employees are going to miss you too. So I, I know it's for the best for you. So we appreciate all your hard work here.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, and our next item is, does anybody have?
Public comment.
Public comment and a motion.
I'm skipping everything here. I didn't, I didn't, no, we did public comment on city manager's report.
It's, it's item. It's an item for approval of the contract.
I see. I was skipping past that too. Sorry. Okay, public comment on the city man, or the city managers? New city manager?
The recommendation is for approve an agreement with the interim city manager services.
Okay, no public comment. We'll close that. Do we have a motion?
I'll go ahead and move to approve the agreement with Amy Nelson for interim city manager services for the City of Fortuna, effective June 24th, 2024.
All in favor?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's a roll call vote. Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes. Okay, back on track.
People that are keeping us going.
City manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. As is customary, I'll run through the, the upcoming meeting dates. Our next regular council meeting is on July 1st at 6 o'clock PM. Our next planning commission meeting will be on June 25th, also at 6 o'clock PM. Our next measure me meeting date is still a ways out, and September 17th. Our next Roanoke Community Recreation Park District meeting is on July 3rd. And our next Fortuna Business Improvement District meeting will be on June 25th. And there's a slight potential that we may cancel that meeting. It, it really depends on what we have for the agenda and if we're going to be ready for that one. So that's to be determined at this point. And I don't have a lot to report. I'll just say one of the things that the summer fund in our camps opened up today. And I know that our parks and recreation director and recreation supervisor have been working hard to get that to happen. And they have a significantly increased amount of enrollment this year. So they really wanted to be able to help serve as many kids as they could during the summer months and for those camp programs, as well as put on some new ones, like having the Roanoke Rangers, which is for younger kids to really get to learn Roanoke Park and to, to kind of take an opportunity to get some ownership and understand that. And also reinstituting the leader in training program, which has been gone for quite some time. And I know the council's seen that during some of the past, the fee schedules and some of the other things that we've looked at. But today was the first day, so there's a really big buildup to that last week. And so we're excited that, that is going. And I haven't heard how it went yet, but I'm sure that it went really well. So with that, that's all I have to report.
Okay. We'll move on to council reports. Councilmember Losi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended a LAFCO meeting on May 23rd at Eureka City Hall, and three of us commissioners received certificates of appreciation for our service because their service was ending. It was Deborah Lake, who was the regular district member, Ally Lee, who was the regular public member, and I was the regular city member. The mayor's select committee should be meeting very soon to choose a new regular city member. So anybody who's interested in being a LAFCO commissioner, let our mayor know. Hopefully, that's scheduled. Maybe not.
I haven't heard about it yet.
Okay. The commissioners in that meeting approved a professional services contract for the executive officer and support staff. They worked through Plan West Partners. So Colette Sanchi, who is the executive officer, will continue on. And then legal services will be provided by Ryan Plots from the Mitchell Law Firm. So they're, he's going to continue. We started the municipal service review and sphere of influence update on the Oryc Community Services District. There were a few suggestions by commissioners. So that review will be taken up at the next LAFCO meeting. We set a final budget for the fiscal year 24-25, which included a 3% increase for member agencies. Each agency that's a part of LAFCO pays a percentage into LAFCO for running the program. The budget saw a very small percentage increase overall. And then we heard a, a report from the executive officer on the expiring terms for the commissioners. The commissioner position for the regular public member has a requirement for a selection, selection committee. And I was chosen on that, to sit on that committee with two other commissioners. So I'll be doing that at least until the end of the month when my term officially expires. That's, well, I was going to talk about parks, but Merritt covered that pretty well, so I appreciate that. I normally don't come up here and sit with a hat on, but this is a very special hat. It's one of the two official rodeo hats for this year. So they are available for purchase. Greens Pharmacy, you can get them. Sequoia Gas, and I believe the Old Rivers Brewery, but I'm not sure about that. But they're out and they're available. And we have the rodeo coming up July 20th and the 21st and the week before. Lots of events on Main Street, all over town, actually, so.
And the junior roundup.
And junior roundup. Lots happening, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Mobley?
I didn't have any meetings to report on, but I did want to make a comment. In meeting with the interim city manager this morning, she made an observation, having reviewed several videos of our council meetings, and commented how nice it was that we get along and don't argue or put each other down, as well as the, the complete staff reports that we get. So I know that that's not really noticed or thought about by our community, but it, but it is important. It is very important.
I'm sure Merritt will really miss that, too. Councilmember Johnson?
Well, I have a HCOG meeting coming up this Thursday. I also had a meeting on the North State Deal, which is the district engineers and locals with Caltrans Quarterly. And I can tell you that we have a ton of work happening in Humboldt County. And Highway 36, Highway 299, there's going to be a lot of work on those, so plan ahead. The closure, single lane and traffic signal on 101 just north of Klamath is now open to two-way traffic. The Hunter Creek Panther Creek Bridge comp project is open. So we got that flowing again. They did choose an alternative for the Last Chance Grade Project, and it is the tunnel. And one of their criteria for that was that it has the least impact on the traveling public because most of it takes place outside of the roadway, except for where it leaves 101 and then reconnects with 101. So they're thinking ahead. And Caltrans has done a great job of reaching out to the local populace in Delmore County, as well as with the enforcement agencies and all the stakeholders, the tribes and fishermen. And this was the consensus to what to work with. So we can look forward to that. And speaking of HCOG, today at our chamber meeting, we had Beth Burks, the executive director, there presenting on what is HCOG? Everyone always hears the acronym, but what is it? And so she talked about it, how it's the funding, the pass-through funding distribution point. It works with housing numbers. It works with public safety for bicycles and pedestrians. We're also the one that administers the call boxes on the highway and pays for supplemental patrols on Highway 36 and 96 where there's not very good cellphone connectivity and not a lot of traffic if you break down. And in 2023, they had 341 public contacts for citizen assists, not pulling over for, for a citation, but stopping to help the public. So then with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor for her report.
Thank you. I have been busy working on the 3rd of July festival, so that's going to be a full festival happening, and that's always fun. And our police, new police station should be in within a couple of weeks. They'll be all settled in and happy as can be, I hope. And that's all I have to report. And it looks like with that, that is it for our meeting. Do we have? That was, did we do that before?
No.
Okay, we'll skip back up there then. Any future agenda items? Okay, now, do we have a, a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, or meeting adjourned.